Thanksgiving to everybody. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever holiday you celebrate. I'm glad everyone's here tonight. I am going to introduce, before we take the roll call, everyone up here on the dais, just for people who are watching at home or here in the audience, our huge audience here in the chamber. So from my left to my right, so this is to your right, to your left, this is Mr. Bosinbrook. He's a member of our board. This is Mr. Green, who's an alternate on this board, so he's sitting as a fully voting member here tonight. This is Vice Chairman Agawis. And I'm Glenn Clark, the Chairman of the Board. And then this is Mr. Eisenbacher. Why can't I remember your name half the time? And this is Mr. McCauley. And at the very far end of the board table is Mr. Kelsounas, who's also an alternate. So he will be having full voting privileges here tonight. At the end is Mr. Evans, who is the City Administrator for the City of Troy, and he serves to support the Board. And then there's Mr. Motzni at the very, very, very end, and he is an Assistant City Attorney with the City of Troy, and he will serve as our legal advisor here tonight. So I'm going to ask Mr. Evans to call the roll.
Mr. Clark.
I'm here.
Mr. Agawis.
Here.
Mr. McCauley.
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Present.
Mr. Kelsounas.
Here.
Mr. Bosinbrook.
Here.
So we have a full voting board here tonight, and then now I'm going to call on Vice Chairman Agawis to read our rules and procedures. So when we operate business here, there are rules and procedures which must be adhered to. We're a quasi-judicial body, and Mr. Agawis, Vice Chairman Agawis, will now read those for people who are here to petition the Board.
The zoning board of appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by City Council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The Board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the Chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the City Administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the Board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the Board may have, the Chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the Chairman, come up to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with the name and address, indicate their relationships to the property in question, such as next-door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the Chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the Chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the Chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, and no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the Board. The Board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the Board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Agawis. Just to sum that up, any comment needs to come from this microphone or these microphones, period. There's no comments from the chamber, otherwise. Okay, so we move right on to item number three, which is the approval of the minutes regarding the November 19th meeting. Is there a member of the Board who wants to be heard? Comment, question, concern to city staff? Mr. Green.
I move that we approve the amendments from the November 19th meeting as printed.
Very good. Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Eisenbacher seconds Mr. Green's motion. Is there any discussion on the motion from a member of the Board? See, none. Mr. Evans, we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. Bosinbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Agawis.
Yes.
Mr. McCauley.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsounas.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, we move right on to the approval of the agenda, item number four. Is there any concern, comment, or consideration related to item number four? No. Do we take a motion on this?
Well, at our last meeting, we had the public hearing, so I'd like to...
On the agenda? I don't believe so.
Oh, wait. I'm one off. Five. Sorry.
Mr. Evans, I can't remember, because I'm on two different public boards. Do we take a motion for approval on this?
That's not necessary. If there's any changes, everyone's in acceptance, we can...
Right, okay. If there aren't any concerns, we are going to move right on to item number five A, which Mr. Eisenbacher, I think, wants to be recognized on. Is that correct?
Well, it's continuation. Continuation of our last hearing, and we had requested that the petitioner go back and speak to his neighbor and try and come up with a solution that would keep both of them happy, so I'd like to hear from the petitioner if he had any success personally.
Oh, I thought you were implying that we were going to have another public hearing, which is...
No.
Okay. So yes, let's call forward the petitioner. Please identify yourself, sir.
Hi, I'm Ken Shaheen. Do you want me to go over what I was petitioning for?
I think maybe a refresher might be good, but I think Mr. Eisenbacher is asking for specifically what your neighbor...
What my neighbor said. So we have two of the neighbors here tonight. We met at my house last night, and I showed them all the things. We discussed how we came to this point with the discussions, and I honestly don't know what their thoughts are, because they never really told me for sure. I've been speaking with one by email, and they had some requests. They had asked for a 3D. They wanted the... One request was an architect to come and design a garage that would more closely resemble the house. It really didn't have a lot to do with the variances, except that they wanted to make it shorter, but that would bring the walls down to six feet in height if I kept the same roof. I'm just trying to match the roof to the house, so I have the same angle on the roof that I have on the house, so they architecturally match. So that accounts for the height of the building primarily, and I just want the two to jibe so that I don't decrease the value of the property. And then, as far as that, they talked about the fence, the location towards the fence, and they want some arborvitae, which I'm fine to provide. And that was...
What did you provide?
They wanted some arborvitae to block it from the one house.
Trees, shrubs?
Trees, shrubs, yeah. So, which is fine. That's not an issue.
Could you describe where the arborvitae would be? Would it be next to the fence line?
I asked if... Okay, I think we have some other photos I brought into the city to show them.
Yeah, so those are the photos on the deuce.
Okay.
Yep. So there's a white outline on the ground where the garage would be. So, because it's closer to the fence, I asked if they wouldn't mind if we put the arborvitae in their yard, and at least, from my understanding, that was okay. So... Unless, has that changed? So, yeah. So, that was the only other concern, so...
Any other member for this petitioner?
I should probably clarify a little bit more, since you have two neighbors. So one wanted along the fence, then you'd go along the side with the other one?
It's...
Or would they...
I don't care. So, I don't think that was his concern.
Okay.
So...
Anyone else? Mr. Green.
As I recall, one of your neighbors had discussed engineering around the floodplain situation, the hundred-year flood area. Was that part of the discussion that you had?
No. The only engineering that had to be done is it had to have standard footings to meet the city requirements, and it had to be not in the hundred-year floodplain. The suggestion from the other neighbor was that we try and mound the property so that we could build within the floodplain. I'd love that, but I don't think... I think you guys decided that you can't override the DEQ, so, I mean, if you can, I'll take it. So, I'd be happy to do that.
I don't think we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're a city body, not a state body, so... Any other member of the Board for this petitioner? All right, and we're not going to hear from the neighbors, because we already had the public hearing.
Okay.
So if you have any paperwork from them saying that they support what you are trying to do, you can submit that now. If not, we're just going to move on.
No, it's just verbal.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we don't need a public hea... Mr. Eisenbacher.
Although we don't need a public hearing, I would like to hear from the neighbors, if they have anything to add. Any of the adjacent neighbors, that is. So if you... That's my request.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I believe... I'm seeing other requests in here.
I would support the motion to that effect.
There's no need for a motion. So, yeah, so if there's a neighbor that's immediately in the area, you want to come to the microphone, we have a couple Board members who would like to hear from you.
Good evening. Jim Green. I'm the neighbor to the east, 2325, with the driveway coming around in the curve right there. So we would be the neighbor affected by the six-foot property setback. So we were the ones that adjusted the arborvitae either on the three-foot or on our side of the fence. That part doesn't matter to me. I was talking with Ken. I think some of the struggles that the neighbors have, there's no real plan on where the garage is going to go in terms of an architectural drawing showing it in place. Yeah, we've seen the white. If the garage is 24 or 25 wide, and it's got a 12-12 roof, if it's a 10-foot or a 9-foot plus 12-foot, that seems to me that that's 21 feet, and he's asking for a variance of 17. So I'd like some clarification on how that's supposed to be calculated or measured. So I guess I've asked him in text today if there's a way that we can see some kind of rendering or drawing of where it goes. So he's got a kit garage that I understand he's utilizing to save... So is that how it's measured? So the total height of the building is not the elevation we're talking about in terms of a variance from a single-car garage at 14 to 17? We're talking about an overall height of over 20 feet, then, is what you're saying, if we look at that drawing?
You can make comments.
Got it.
This isn't a question.
You can't question that, okay. So I've asked Ken to create something that the neighbors could see that would show the garage-in location, and perhaps some view of how it looks on the property that would help us visualize a little better what it would mean to grant the variance, what it's going to look like when the variance is granted. So...
If the variance...
If the variance is granted. So my understanding of the process, if the variance is approved, the building permits are a separate how-to-build-it as opposed to what you're allowed to build. So this is really the last opportunity that neighbors have to have any input to what is being built on his property. I'm very clear that it's his property, and he pretty much can do with it as he wants, but he's asking for variances, and I'd like to have a little more understanding of exactly what it's going to kind of look like.
Mr. Eisenbacher? Mr. Green?
So I believe your understanding of your opportunities is correct. Given that lacking the rendering in situ, would you tonight be in favor or neutral on the issue?
I guess I'd like to have more time to understand exactly what he's building, and I wasn't involved at the last meeting, so I'm coming late to the party, and I know he's got years of frustration building this garage, and I can empathize with his frustration with the process. And now, to put it off another month, I can feel his eyes burning in the back of my head. But I'd like, just for the neighborhood harmony, I'd like to see a little more visual representation of what's happening.
I have a question.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Okay. There's several elements to this variance, and as a Board, we can grant or deny each of those different elements. One of those is the garage height, which you mentioned. I believe it's very uncommon for this Board to have ever granted a height variance for a garage.
Okay.
Also, this two-story nature, I believe, falls in that same category. I can't remember a time where we've granted a two-story garage in the city, because it's very hard to show the practical difficulties for those two situations. The third one, yeah...
I disagree. This is a discussion.
Yeah, I'm just...
So at our manufacturing plant, we do 3D representation all the time to understand the traffic flow, the manufacturing piece, how it's all going to work. So it's not a lot of money to put a 3D shape in the actual representation of what it is and actually drive up to it, take a view from the Opie House, which is the other neighbor, looking back this way, take a view from my house, take a view from his house. When you come down Ken's driveway, over the bridge, it's a beautiful bridge, it's a beautiful piece of property, you look right at Mr. Opie's house, not at Ken's pond and beautiful landscaping and all that. So I think if there is a garage there that's tastefully done, I think that actually would improve his property and his curb appeal. So the front yard, backyard thing, he explained to us that thing, and then the other part of that is, we've lived on the street since, ooh, '91. The floodplain was redrawn 10 or 15 years ago, I think. So I don't know how much property he lost from a floodplain thing. I had talked to a couple people today about the floodplain modification, and depending on how that all works, you're allowed to bring in something, 250 yards of fill, or I forget the exact number that I was told, and I'm not going to send Ken back to the DEQ. I appreciate the round and round he got on that. But I think if he were to engage someone that is aware of those nuances, something could happen. I know 3D renderings are not a lot of money, and I think it would help sell the project.
So, okay, so that explains it. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, whoops. I'm sorry. Another...
Mr. Bosinbrook?
I'm sorry, I just want... I have one question. So, just so I'm clear, there's... The variance request is actually, I guess, four different variances wrapped into one. Two of them have to do with the height of the garage and the stories, and the other one has to do with the setback, and the fourth has to do with the front yard versus backyard. So just so I'm clear, the two that you are sort of struggling with tonight are the dimensional aspects of it?
Height and the two-story.
Okay.
The three-foot off the property line or the front yard, backyard, there's no really other place he can build it than where he's looking to put it.
Okay.
Unless he puts it... Yeah, no, there's really no other place to put it.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Eisenbacher asked for other neighbors? Don't be shy. Come on forward.
Hi, my name is Randall Ray. If you could put the map back up, I can basically show you where I live. I live at 2281 Prestwick in a cul-de-sac. That's right. So right here, that's the Opie House, and I live right here in this cul-de-sac. Those are four houses that were all built together simultaneously in around 1998. Okay, just to let you know. We moved here from California. It was very important for us to have an open space, nice lot, you know, not a lot of cliffs. I lived on a cliff, basically, in California, and we wanted to try to avoid that. This spot, in my opinion, is one of the nicest spots in the City of Troy, maybe the nicest spot. I mean, it's... And I don't want to brag about it, but it's obviously very nice. Ken Shaheen and his family are fantastic neighbors. This is nothing personal. We just want to basically make sure that since the property is so nice and so valuable, that all of the neighbors have something to say and add, so that we can add to the value, obviously, of all of our properties, and I think that that makes sense. I'm not as advanced as Jim Green, but what I can do is give you a write-up. Can I approach and hand out some pictures here? Okay.
The end, yes. You can just hand them all to him, and then he'll just pass them on. Thank you.
Sure. I thought that, prior to the 3D modeling, that this might help out you visualize, basically, where the property is and actually how high we are set up, looking down into the Shaheens' property. In particular, the image that you're seeing right now is a picture right from Tim Opie's deck, which is at the height of our property. So if you look at this rendering right here, there's a significant hill that goes down and overlooks, basically, the garage, okay? And the first image that you have on the top is just a plain view, basically, of what it looks like at the Opie House, and on the second page is my free hand, basically, of what the garage would look like, looking out the Opie's windows, and also from their deck, okay? I think that's really important. The reason why I feel that that's very important is because that we want to make sure that Tim Opie's house, or the Opie's family house, which is the nicest house in our cul-de-sac, okay, that maintains its value. Because if the value of his house goes down, then I personally believe that the value of my house, which is right here, is going to go down as well. Do I have that?
By the way, I just have to say this. I'm going to interrupt you for a second. I've been on this Board for, feels like, 100 years. It's been a long time since I've been on this Board. No one has ever brought a laser pointer to one of these meetings. I think I've been on this Board 12, 13, I don't know how many years it's been, really, quite frankly.
Well, I thought it would help.
Maybe even longer, but I find it a little humorous, but that's okay.
Okay.
I'm not offended. I'm just saying, I had it pointed out.
Well, it's a detailed map, and this is a very important project, I think, for all of us. As you can see, the Shaheens' property is significant, as well as the Green's are about the same size in total. That's Jim Green, that's the Shaheens', and it's also important to note that the Opies bought their house first. They were here before the Shaheens moved in, and I know for a fact that he basically grew up in the area, and that that was the location that he had specked out many, many years ago. I'm talking, you know, he grew up in the neighborhood next to ours. So if you take a look at the image, you see, hey, look, you're going to look out the guy's window, and you're going to see a structure there, right? So I think we owe it to the Opies and to the rest of the neighbors to make sure that we're all, obviously, happy with it. The question that I have is, quite simply, is why can't the garage go right there? I mean, that's something that I don't really understand, and I do realize that Ken may have to get rid of his circular driveway right here.
No comments from the gallery, I'm sorry. So I'll use the gavel if I have to.
So it might be a cost issue, but, I mean, obviously, Ken's property overlooks this, right? And Op's property, Mr. Opie's property overlooks this, right over the garage. And here's the Rouge River, the main branch, coming through his property. One of the main reasons why we bought in that area was because of both of these properties here. The fact that we can access through here hikes, go down the Rouge. I do it almost daily with my dog. So basically, you know, if I was to build a garage, a fourth garage, and by the way, we're talking about a fourth and a fifth garage here, right? He already has a three-car garage, I have a three-car garage, so, I mean, to basically add on to this part, you know, I realize it could be expensive, that's where his three-car garage is right here. So I think, in the previous meeting, we were talking about lawn equipment, right? Because he has to mow all this, and I certainly... I have a lawnmower myself. My yard is not as big, but I can see why he would have that. So I think we're really talking about more than just a shed for lawn mowing. As you can see, we're talking about a two-car garage. And we want to give Ken what he wants, and I personally think this location here is a good one. I understand the DEQ situation, but it might make some sense for us to spin around after we do these 3D drawings and see what does it really entail, because that's where we all want to put it, including Ken, right? I don't care if he builds a three-car garage here, so long as the Opie's view isn't affected, right? And which would, in turn, maybe affect my property's value. So, you know, basically, in closing, you know, we're not talking about one variance. We're talking about four variances, and I do realize that you only get one shot at this. I'm building a cottage up north on Crystal Lake, and one of the things I had to do in order to get approved is I had to go and get a survey done, and I had to have that all approved by the people that were behind me, right? Because I'm building a peaked house, and so they came and they lasered it, and they surveyed it, and then I got everybody to sign off, basically, on the height. The peak of my house couldn't be higher than the level of the deck of the guy that was on the bluff behind me. So, just to let you know. Not that we wouldn't eventually approve this structure here, because Ken, obviously, is a very, very good guy, very important neighbor, all those sorts of things. We just get one shot at talking to you. So as of right now, I'm a no on the variances, just to let you know, until that we have really come to terms with Opie's view and the impact, basically, of the value, if any, on our houses. We're not talking years here, we're talking a couple of months. We'd like to be, or a month or so, to be able to go through this together, the four or five of our residents and neighbors, to make sure that Ken gets what he wants, obviously. It might be slightly different than the way it's designed right now. That's my opinion. Any questions?
Vice Chairman Agawis?
Just a quick one, because I was looking at you and not the laser pointer. Which house is yours? 2280 or...
2281. So here's the Opie House, my house is right here.
Okay. And who's Opie, or what's the Opie House?
That's Tim Opie, right there.
Okay.
And he's going to speak next. The Opie House is right here.
Okay, okay. I missed Opie, yeah.
Yeah. Now, this structure right here was rebuilt. The original house was here, it was knocked down, and those folks moved out, and then the Shaheens, who are fantastic neighbors, bought this house. But that was, that was actually after, quite a few years after, the Opie family built this house, right? So, just to let you know. And they're all 1998 vintage homes, and then Mr. Green, basically, moved into this house here. here shortly thereafter, we moved in. So, it's a nice family, it's a nice group of people, and it's a beautiful piece of property, as you can tell from the pictures.
Thank you. Mr. McCully?
You said you weren't here at the last meeting?
I was here at the last meeting.
You were, okay.
Yes.
And between the last meeting being continued to this meeting, when was, have you guys had a chance to meet with Mr. Shaheen?
The neighbors met. I was supposed to be there yesterday, but I had to pick up my son. The meeting was at seven, so I was advised shortly thereafter and went after, but Ken had already left, and I've reviewed, basically, all the plans and specifications there.
So, yesterday, 7 o'clock was the only time that you had met regarding this?
Yes, sir. That's the only time that we've had an opportunity to look at these plans and specifications. We haven't looked at anything in detail yet.
Okay.
And again, we're looking to help, we're looking to get a structure for them. We want to do it.
I was looking at the timing and logistics of it a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Did you speak at the last meeting?
I did not get, I did not speak, because by the time I was going to speak, that basically was already agreed that we were going to, basically, table it to the next meeting, so I decided to wait until this meeting. And Mr. Green-
We let everybody have an opportunity.
Excuse me?
We had, we gave everybody an opportunity to speak who wanted to speak before we-
Right, but I was at the meeting. It was moved to the next meeting by the time I was going to speak.
Correct, but we had a public hearing, and everybody was allowed to speak. So, I don't know, the other gentleman, he did speak.
He did.
So, we're not going to hear from him tonight. There isn't a public hearing tonight.
I know.
Well, I would say that you got a chance to hear from Ken Shaheen, why wouldn't you want to hear from Tim Opie?
Because he already spoke on the public record.
Well, so did Ken Shaheen.
Okay, sir, if you could have a seat, thank you very much. Thank you very much. There is not a public hearing, to my board colleagues, tonight. There is not a public hearing. So, if we want to hear from, sir, you could have a seat.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought he was asking me a question. Thanks.
You were completing your statement.
You could have a seat.
Thank you.
We don't have a notice to the public for a public hearing tonight. The board is going to consider it. If we've already heard from a member of the public who lives in that neighborhood, there's no reason to hear from him, he or she, tonight again, but I don't have a hard, fast cattle here. I just try and do, I think, what is right. So, yes, Mr. Green?
Well, I would agree, and I would absolutely, there's no question, right? There's no additional public notice presented on a public hearing for this, because there is none. However, we did specifically ask the petitioner to go back and speak with his neighbors, which we've heard from one neighbor who we had not heard from, but-
Correct.
Others who we had, and as the petitioner said, he is not aware of their feelings after the discussion, so I would be interested in any updates to those feelings.
Okay. I'll allow it, but we're going to do it real briefly. So, if Mr., what is it, Opie, wants to come, you're going to have to be, sir, very brief. Simply put, you've already spoken on the public record on your opinion, and we can all go back on the video evidence about it, so you could just take just a couple minutes.
My name's Tim Opie, I live at 2272 Prestwick.
And please tell us something different than you haven't told us-
I met everyone last time, except for him. I live in a castle above Mr. Shaheen. I look out my kitchen window, and I'm looking at a garage. I've told you everything I told last time. Ken's a good neighbor, and I want to stay within the zoning. It's a tough one. All the variances affect us in one way, shape, or form. I mean, any questions? Anyone want to come over and look out the kitchen window? Okay.
You look out the kitchen window and you see what? A garage that's not built?
We've checked out where it's going to be.
Where it would be.
Where it would be.
So, you're not seeing a garage?
And Ken nicely has marked the ground so that we can see.
Very good.
So, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Okay. We bring it back to the board table. Is there a board member who wants to be recognized? Mr. Green?
I have, perhaps, an unrequest, and the answer may be no by our rules. However, agreeing with some of the comments that I heard, I would have liked to see the potential structure in situ. I very quickly mocked something up during this discussion and sent it to you, sir, Mr. Evans. I was wondering if that is something you could quickly review yourself, and if that would be allowed to be put before for agreement, or, not by the board, but for agreement by the petitioner, that that is what he expects. I quickly mocked up what I suspect it would look like in situ.
I don't think it'd be fair to necessarily perform a zoning review tonight.
Absolutely.
I think that normally would come from the petitioner.
Absolutely.
So, are you proposing a postponement for something to come back to the board from the petitioner at a future meeting?
I think I'll wait on that to see what my fellow board members have to say first.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Eisenbacher?
I've already spoken too much. I want to hear more from my colleagues, but in terms of our criteria, I don't have a strong enough feeling between the five elements to make a decision one way or another, and I would like to have, basically, item E, where the proposed variance will not be harmful or alter the essential character of the area in which the property is located, and the supply of light and air and everything else. That's the one that I'm struggling with, and that's the one that impacts the neighbors, and that's why I wanted to hear from the neighbors, because of the impacts on item E with the neighbors. I believe that's the one with the property value, or impair the established property The other four, I'm happy with, but because of item E being unresolved relative to the neighbors, and them wanting to see it in situ, I would be in favor of tabling based on the input from my colleagues.
Is that a motion?
I want input.
Okay.
If there's four people that are hard against it, then it doesn't make sense to-
Mr. McCully? I did review this, because last meeting, I attended, planned on attending, so I looked at this, and I've actually went out and viewed it myself, so I am pretty familiar with it, even though I was not at the last meeting. And the fact that I was tabled coming back, I'm in agreement with Mr. Eisenbacher. One, meeting with the neighbors the night before the meeting, when it's been sitting out there for close to 30 days, and not having attended to it, coming in without a real hard plan, three-dimensional drawing, something, mock-up to show us what we can do, and really getting the nuts and bolts taken care of item E of our statement of practical difficulty. I don't want to say no, because I'm hearing neighbors saying, we don't want to say no, but I'm saying, go back and fix it, so that way, everybody's happy with it, and not wait till the night before the next meeting to get it taken care of, so that way, you can give us better information to help us make a better decision.
Is that a motion?
Not yet.
Anyone else? Mr. Green?
I move to postpone this item to our next meeting to allow the petitioner to further discuss with his neighbors and perhaps present a better rendering.
I'll second.
Moved by Green and Eisenbacher to postpone until, what is this, December? So, I guess, our January meeting. With a request for further communication with neighbors and rendering of some sort to the board, so we can better understand what's proposed. Mr. McCully, discussion?
I just want to, discussion, I want to make sure that with the holidays, if that gives Mr. Shaheen enough time to go back and get this information taken care of, so is 30 days adequate, or if he wants 60 days to be able to go back and take care of it? So, we postpone it to the February meeting. So, give him the time to get it done correctly.
We can recall Mr. Shaheen.
Please.
To the podium, please.
My question, Mr. Shaheen, is if you would be prepared in 30 days, or do you want 60 days with the holidays and everything?
So, prior to that, you said the meeting was the night before. It wasn't my choice, those guys scheduled it.
I understand.
So, just so you know.
I understand.
I've been around for a month. I've been off, because I've been had surgery. So, will 60 days do it? I don't know, because right now, I direct the residency in plastic surgery at Beaumont Hospital. We have interviews on the next Tuesday that you guys are scheduled, so unless that's altered, I won't be here then, but I don't know, because I don't have that, because I just found out about the, these guys' objections.
So, at least you want to go out 60 days, because you won't be here for the January meeting.
But that'll, the issue is, it'll get, it's going to put me into the summer in construction, possibly, because the way things roll. So, I'm just trying to get all, much of this done, so that when the spring comes, we'll be able to do something. But, so, 60, I don't know. I'll try for next month, I just don't know. I can't tell you, because then I have my calendar in front of me, so.
I just wanted to try and make it viable for you to be able to do.
Yeah. So, can I communicate with Mr. Evans regarding that, as far as I can, whether-
When the board makes a decision, and then you can always communicate with Mr. Evans, because he's a very easy-to-talk-to guy, but-
I'd do it next month if I can.
You can't call tomorrow and say, well, I said January, but now I want February.
Yeah.
The board makes this decision.
Okay. I can't say, I can't tell you with certainty that I'll be available for January.
Comfortably, just put it on the February agenda.
Which are?
Because if you can't be, although, Mr. Evans, I mean, we could, if the board chooses, if this gentleman isn't here in January, we could just postpone to February, correct?
Sure, and if he knows in advance he's not going to be here, he could send an email to the city indicating that he won't be-
Let's just do that.
I just haven't had a chance to check my calendar.
Right. We'll put it on January's calendar. If you don't show up, don't worry, we're just going to kick it to February.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Yep. That's the motion, anyway, so, yep.
I wanted to amend my motion.
Okay.
I would further request that we allow for a second public, official public hearing to ensure that what we are looking for from this, which is the neighbors to feel that it does not harm the essential character, have their opportunity.
Mr. Evans? We've never done it before.
No.
Not on the bazillion years I've been here, because it costs the city money. Postcards go out, notices, so forth.
Withdrawing.
Newspaper, yeah. I mean, we can do what we did tonight.
Withdrawing.
If there's a member or two that wants to hear from residents that are in the area who show up, who didn't show up, I just don't think it's appropriate to have a person come three times and give public comment three separate times, or four times if it's postponed again, you know what I'm saying? But a member has a right to pretty much request anything they want, so.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. It wasn't seconded, so it's okay.
Yeah, exactly.
But your main motion is still on the table.
Yes, sir.
So, is there any further discussion on postponing until January? Mr. Evans, we're prepared for a vote.
Mr. McCully?
Yes.
Mr. Bosinbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Keltzounis?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Agalas?
Yes.
Motion carries. This will be on our January calendar. If the gentleman doesn't show up, somebody's just going to have to remember to make a motion to further postpone until February. Go on to item B, related to 4075 Chestnut Hill. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, they're asking for a variance to construct in addition to the house, and they're going to need a variance from the required front yard setback. This property's in a residential neighborhood north of-
Waddles.
North of Waddles? Yeah, it's-
You cannot speak from the gallery. Mr. Evans?
North of Waddles, and obviously, east of Adams. I have it here outlined at 4075. It's right on the corner of Waddles and the side street. And there's a close-up of the property and the existing conditions at the time this photo was taken. This is a survey provided with the application, and the hatched area denotes the addition, and the ordinance does require that there be a 40-foot setback for any parts of the house that are enlarged from Chestnut Hill, and they're proposing 36 and 1/2 foot setback. The applicants provided a floor plan indicating the area that's going to be modified, and they've also provided some elevations. These are all in the packets, so in order to proceed with what they want to do, they're requesting relief from the board.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Evans? Or Mr. Motzne? Okay, we'll call the petitioner forward. Once again, you can only speak from that microphone. That's it.
Yes, sir.
No other option.
My name is James Pomeroy. I'm the father of my daughter Catherine Getz.
Welcome, thank you.
What we're asking, it's a three-bedroom, one-bath home on a slab with a two-car-attached garage, and what we'd like to do is move into the, move the living space into the garage area to create two more bedrooms. She has four children, three boys and a girl, and then add, what we're asking for is the addition of the, of a two-car garage in front of the existing two-car garage, which would be, and that's where we would violate that 40-foot variance from the street. And to do, you know, to do that, that would give her an extra bathroom and a master bedroom for herself, and a bedroom for two of the boys, and then the other two children would have their own bedroom. And it would also add, like, a vestibule, a new front entrance, which would be in the middle there, and with access from the garage itself into the vestibule area. We thought about adding the garage on the end of the house, but to do that, to that, to do that would mean that there would be an entrance from the garage into the living, into the bedroom areas of the house, and I'm sure there's a variance out there somewhere that says you don't have a garage with an entrance into the bedroom areas of the house. So, that's why we'd like to put it on the front. Are there any questions?
Questions of this petitioner's representative?
I have one question.
Mr. McCully?
How much square footage are you talking about adding?
It would be just the 20-by-20, 20-by-20-foot garage, and then a nine-by, I believe it's nine-by-11 feet for the vestibule area.
About 500.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
So, we are going to turn it over to Vice Chairman Agalas about any communications on this item.
No further communications.
Okay. Thank you. And we're going to open the public hearing. You want to speak on this matter before the board, please step to the podium, and you will be heard. Second call for public comment on this matter. Please step to the podium. Final and last call, we close out the public hearing. So, we bring you back to the board's attention at the board table, and is there a member of the board who wants to be recognized? Mr. McCully?
As I look at our statement of practical difficulty, A, the exceptional characteristics of the property make it substantially more difficult than a regular-shaped piece of property. I think that what they're looking for with this piece of property is very reasonable and not intrusive. I look at it that it, I think our statements of practical difficulty, A through E, that I can find all those that we could fit this into. So, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the addition for this resident as, the variance for this addition, as they're seeking it.
I second that.
Moved and seconded for approval of the petitioner's request. Mr. Evans, we're prepared for a vote, appears.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Bostonbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Keltsounas?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
This is a hard one. I'm going to vote yes, but I really want to vote no, but anyway, anyway, these people seem pretty good folk, but anyway, it's a yes.
Mr. Agalas?
Yes.
Mr. McCully?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, you have your variance. Have a very good holiday season. Enjoy your evening, and keep warm. It's going to get cold tonight. Okay, we go on, right on to item six, communications. Mr. Evans, are there any communications?
No.
Any miscellaneous business? We do have the, Mr. Evans prepared our meeting agenda for the New Year, which is kind of crazy that it's almost here, right?
Yeah, this follows our normal schedule.
Right.
There's no deviations, and we don't really have to decide on it, but if any board member picks up any conflict, perhaps with a busy holiday or something, just let us know and take it from there.
We don't need to approve this, do we?
No, it's consistent with your-
Yeah, it's just administrative. Okay, so I'm going to open public comments. You're here to speak about anything. What you're doing for the holidays, what you ate for Thanksgiving, whatever you want to talk about, you can come to the microphone now. How many steps you had to walk off that Thanksgiving meal? You can do it right here at the microphone now. Second call for public comments.
Jim Green?
2325 Kingsbury. Just want to thank all of you for volunteering your service for the city.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays.